Good evening, I will now call to order the October 22nd, 2025 special meeting of the City's South Pasadena Library Community Center Comprehensive Site Plan at HOP committee and we will call the role. Mayor Janet Braun here, Sheila Rossi. Kristen DuBey. Leslie Albinfield.
Here.
Alexandria Levitt.
Here.
Tom Ashar.
Here.
Rich Albom.
Here.
Tony Ho. Jean Kim. Bianca Richards.
Here.
Victoria Rocha.
Here.
Dean Serwin.
Here.
Julia Wang.
Here.
Jasper Long. We do have a forum and I would also like to note that our city's Assistant City Manager and Chief Financial Officer Nick Kimball is here and we have staff members. We see Koby Anna and Melissa Snyder from the Community Services Department. So the first item on our agenda is public comments. We did not receive any public comment in the inbox, email inbox. Melissa, do we have any public comment online? No, no public comments, so I will close the public comment period. The next item on our agenda is the reordering of additions or deletions to the agenda. Does anyone have any changes they would like to have made to the agenda? If no, we will move on to item three, which is just to approve the minutes from the October 2nd meeting. Those are in the packet which you did not get in advance, so they are here. They're fairly brief, so if anyone has any comments, changes, let us know, otherwise we can take the motion.
I still move.
Alexandra and Jean is the second, thank you. Any discussion? No, then we will call for more again. Mayor Janet Braun. I was not here, so I have the last thing. Leslie Albinfield.
Yes.
Alexandria Levitt.
Yes.
Tom Ashar.
Yes.
Rich Albom.
Yes.
Tony Ho's not here, Jean's not here, Bianca Richards.
Yes.
Victoria Rocha.
That's it.
Dean Serwin.
Prove.
Julie Wang.
Yes.
And the motion freeze. So now we're on to item four, which is the meat of the matter. This is our main focus, is to try to help you guys come up with the recommendation that you would like to make to City Council. We got a lot of great feedback last time in terms of what might help you evaluate and assess the information in front of you, so you'll see at the end of this packet are some slides that we revised. There's also a very brief staff report that he sort of summarized of, you know, what we're looking at, we have these three options. Out of the last meeting came, I think, sort of consensus that A is not an option that people think is insurable or that they would recommend. And that B is good, but it needs a little bit of a plus, and I think that's kind of where we are, is for you guys to think about what that plus might look like. So to that end, what we've attached are a few documents. One is sort of the the building program, looking at the square footage. We've added the existing square footage to that chart because I know that that was something that had come up before. So again, the idea, trying to make it easier, easier for us to compare the, what we have now and the three options. The second chart is looking at kind of seating and capacity across a lot of the same programmatic areas. And there's some little footnotes there, like questions people might have about why did it go from 30 people to 12 people, and we can talk about some of those things if those things come up. And then third slide is looking at kind of the high level. Some of the building elements, these were in the last presentation under like building scope, so you know, are we getting HVAC, are we getting, you know, are walls moving, but also sort of the elements or the kind of objectives that we had, so did we get, did the options give us better access to the seniors? Do the options give us some of the things that were important to us? So that's what that slide looks like. The fourth slide is just the cost models, which have not changed, but I put the man to that we could remember that. And then the last slide looks a little different. It is the equivalent of the capacity, seating and capacity slide, but people had asked to have the programmatic elements across the top. So it's the same thing as that second page, except it's transposed. So that helps anyone to look at it, it's just looking at it in a, in a transposed way, but it's the exact same information in terms of the seating and capacity. Some of the notes that I put into the staff report, which I think have come out of previous discussions, are some of the observations about option A that people have brought up, including you don't see an increase in square footage with option A. Being kind of confined or constrained by the current footprint limits what we can do to increase functionality if we're doing a renovation only. It doesn't, it doesn't integrate the community room into the, the facility and kind of give us that combined kitchen event space. It doesn't really give us any of these shared spaces, which was one of our main objectives, was to kind of both operationally and in terms of maximizing the value of our square footage, was to create these shared spaces that we could use at different times of day, so we don't really get that out of option A. We don't really get a joint lobby that, that we can share, so that people can come in and participate in all the different activities from one main entrance point. With the current footprint, we're probably stuck with some of our things that we don't like, like our low ceilings and our dark and underground ceiling spaces that are in the library in particular. It doesn't really improve our access from the street. I think that some of the other options that we're looking at with the kind of the plaza on the northeast corner bring, brings the entrance closer to the street, so seniors and families don't have to walk as far from the curb, so we don't really get that out of option A. And my understanding is that the restrooms, and it shows that on the charts, but the restrooms would be idly compliant. But it's not clear to me whether with a renovation, we would be able to actually make improvements to the restrooms on the second floor outside the community room in terms of the capacity or the number of stalls. So that's something that, again, just being constrained by the current building. So those are some of the observations that I think have come up about option A. You guys may have others, but I think as you go into your recommendation, well, you know, you'll want to probably identify some of these things that are driving your recommendations. Option B, I think that some of the things that I noticed in looking at these comparisons that are laid out a little differently or a little more clearly now. You know, the new construction would allow for a much more functional and, and operationally functional layout. And also, I think aesthetically, a lot of improvements, but we don't actually get any additional square footage. It actually, in a way, some of the dedicated senior spaces are actually reduced because you know, now in this footprint and in option A, they have this big room. But in option B, they have nice new dedicated lounge and a nice new dedicated classroom, but their other usage is meant to be in some of the shared spaces, like the community room. But that's really the only shared space that is in option B versus option C, which has all those additional classrooms and dance studios, et cetera. So that's concerning to me, and I think that's where the plus idea comes in, you know, that, oh, maybe we didn't get enough for seniors, maybe we didn't get enough for whatever. And again, the main thing, again, if you, if you look at this and you see where these red Xs are, the thing that you're getting in option C that you're not getting in B is square footage, and that square footage is really assigned to these three additional shared kind of flexible spaces, which are the multipurpose classroom, the sort of maker space, messy, you know, art craft classroom, and then the fitness space that community indicated they would like to see for the seniors. And I think that those are the main differences that, that I see. So I, with that, I'm, you know, open it up to you guys to whatever ask questions I can certify.
Yeah, I mean, and I, because I'm confused.
Yeah.
And to me, this, this chart is, well, so, I mean, there's still going to be shared spaces in, in option A and B. I mean, for example, we, we get red Xs for multi-use classroom, right? We only have that option in, in option C, but that's not really the case. I mean, we're sitting in a, in a, in a multi-use classroom right now, so you should, you should really have it. It's just a, it's just not a dedicated classroom space, it's going to be, it's going to be multi-use where, and the same thing with the, you know, the, the dance studio, I mean, there's dance classes going on, so I mean, there must be something that, that can be utilized for dance. So it's just a shared space, a multi, multi-use space rather than, what option C offers is a dedicated space that only there for, for dance, or only there for, and, and I don't, I don't think it's justified to put these Xs there because they're, it's just a shared space, it's just not a dedicated.
Well, and I think you guys, we can maybe speak to how it works operationally. The library doesn't use the space because we don't have any access to it. We, you know, we're doing something with kids or we'd have to come outside and, and come around, so we don't use the space. The seniors use the community room for classes twice a week, I think. So we do, we do. For dinner. So to some extent, that is more of a, I mean, but I still, I don't know if I would call it a shared space, but yes, you guys use it. But I think the issue and the reason that we're not counting it as, it is shared is because we never used it that way, and because it does present difficulties to, to call it a shared space when it's physically separated.
So what is this space called and where is this shown in the existing?
Senior lounge slash seating room is what they're considering this space.
I see. But I mean, it, it feels more like a multi-use classroom to me.
For the seniors, I mean, it's multi-use for their purposes, but it's not, the library doesn't use it. We don't have a key.
But, but I mean, in, but in, for option B, it could potentially be shared. I, I mean, I just don't understand why, it, it just seems like you're not getting a whole lot of option B, which I don't, I don't believe is really the case. I mean, you, it's just a, a shared component to it rather than a dedicated.
Well, I would echo what Tom's saying because, like I know, seniors, they use the community room for their fitness classes, which is not a dedicated fitness ba, like doesn't have gym equipment, but that's, if you had gym equipment, you couldn't use it for fitness classes either, because it'd be awful of gym equipment, so maybe there's another way to finesse this because we can use larger spaces for fitness classes or dance. True, they're not dedicated, but they can be used for that, especially when kids are in school and other things are happening, so.
I, I echo that. You know, I, I've been saying that we need a B-plus plan that would increase the square footage, and what I would have loved to have seen would have been a smaller second story or a smaller first and second stories that would increase the overall square footage and allow for that dedicated aspect to some spaces, but you know, all along I've been saying this is, and Nick, I, I heard asked a little bit at another meeting about, you know, this is not a library and it's not a senior center and it's not a community center. It is an entirely new facility that is available with all of those things, so echoing Tom, you know, every point. But I'd like to see an increase in the overall square footage, and I think that, that's why, you know, maybe we call it a C-minus instead of a B-plus because it's, I'd love to see a two-story facility that doesn't give us 40,000 square feet or whatever the number is, but maybe gives us, what, what do we have, 27 now? So maybe 30, 32,000 square feet, add something.
But, but don't we have that? By having, the way I understand this, the renovation space, the 1930 space, it's going to be 3,000. So in my mind, it's, it's in my head, it's 3,000 plus 27,000, 320, so that's 30,000.
Is the rental not included?
I don't think so.
It doesn't include, so.
So that's 27, an option B, the 27, 320 is, is inclusive of, because that doesn't.
The same amount of space that we have now, but it's new construction, so it would be much more efficient, functional. The shared spaces, you know, we would have shared that you could, you know, yeah, we would gain efficiency because we don't need two separate lobbies, we have one lobby. So we would be gaining functional space, but the, the square footage doesn't increase, and according to, to this, what would be missing are these things where you have red Xs, so multi-use classroom, the major space kind of lab and the fitness studio are the main things that are sort of missing in A and B.
My, my point and to Tom's point and Ken Galaxander's point also, if I can be so bold, is that if we were to increase the overall available space by a bit, add a room here or there that is multipurpose, at some point in the future, if there's money, if we get a grant for a maker space, we can go and get the 3D printers and things like that to put into one of these rooms that are functionally available for other things that we would be using for now. So again, I, I think that we're doing ourselves a disservice if we don't look at, at that aspect, and one of the things that people talked about it to a great extent was the, the park, and could we increase the park? Well, if we decrease the first story footprint, have the, you know, one of the things that's missing and only is available for some, for whatever reason in in version C, is to have an outdoor terrace, because we decreased the, the first story footprint, but then have a second story so that we can still have a, a more functional building, but we don't have to go to the extreme of the 40,000 square foot, 41,000 square foot, that's going to increase our costs and.
I don't know if, I think the point you're making is that I guess I don't know if at this stage it's, if we're making recommendations or you are making recommendations about the number of stories, like what you're saying is you want more square footage and good park access, so whether the designer at some point comes in and says, here's how you can get that, you give that in a two-story, you get that if we do this or that, you know what I mean? Like, that's more of a design question, so if we can get down to, you know, what is the request? And, and I think you're absolutely right, right? These spaces have to be flexible. You know, I mean. So perhaps, it sounds like the goal of our committee, right, is to put before the council our final recommendation, and we had them reconfigure this so that we can disprove the utility of A, which I think the, the chart presents a little bit more effectively now. And we've been hoping for the charts to more effectively make the case that something along the lines of a B-plus would be helpful, and the plus portion is the fact that some of these spaces, as currently configured, are solo use, but with the renovation idea would be, these would now be easier access, so technically on paper right now, they are just still designated as A, for example. You know, let me find a spot, but if we're talking about this room, for example, like the game room, right, we're thinking that under B, it would have an asterisk that says that now that it's now open access to both the library, the seniors and the community, even though it is technically counted space-wise as a senior game room, now that it's open access, it could be asterisk used for other purposes, and so that would demonstrate for us that even though the square footage is still significantly less than the 40, the utility, right, the functionality of the rooms is now enhanced. So I think that's what we're pushing for is maybe something in this data, because otherwise, when you purely look at the data, again, it just looks like we've lost a lot of space and we lost a lot of rooms. What's unspoken here is that even though there's maybe in some pieces less dedicated space, but all of those dedicated spaces, if you add them together, have more multi, multifunctional space that's not noted as clearly, so perhaps if we do that, that gives us more effectively that B-plus idea. Because we're, we're not actually going to the council with a specific plan of like one story versus two story, and even this, and even like the exact makeup or the outdoor space, those are all design details that we can't even start touching until we start looking at architectural bids, right, which is like far down the line, even after, after we start talking about that. It, I, I would, yeah, my, my understanding was like there was some amount of, like, funding versus architectural that we were still balancing in that next step, but like this step right now is just, please don't pick A, like, you know, the reason B actually is more attractive than A is because, and then we, we recognize that C may be a little bit of a pipe train because of how, how extensive the changes are.
But I don't think these, these tables really reflect the value of B.
Yes.
Completely. And, and I think what Kathy is saying is, is absolutely correct. By having a, a new construction, you have much better efficiencies. You, you, you know, spaces can be, can be shared much easier, they're better aligned, circulation's better, so. So I, I, I would like to see less Xs on B versus A, and like you said, like, I mean, why couldn't there be a, a multi-use classroom as a, as a shared space? But, I mean, there, there's, there's opportunities to, to have shared space that, that would, that would make B very extractive, and I think actually B, we're, we're, we're looking at, we're looking for B pro, but I think B is already B-plus.
Yeah.
If you, if you count for all the efficiencies, we, we can get them, trust in the, in the design team to, to lay it out very efficiently.
And if we can list out perhaps some of those hopes, right, that we're looking for the design team that can help us find, you know, the, the dance and fitness studio that can be rolled into the senior lounge and game room, or that the, the maker space that could potentially in the future be rolled into the senior classroom, so those are the kind of the B pluses that we're looking for, so we need an asterisk next to these, because if they're not really Xs, it's just the asterisk is that this space is not a dedicated space, we are going to be time sharing, right, with, with another functionality.
Yeah, I see, I think what you're saying and that what you're saying also is that, yeah, we're, we're kind of short cutting ourselves here or short short, shorting ourselves, shortchanging ourselves here, that you're sticking with the, what does the community want, right? But the community doesn't, yeah, I can want anything and it's not going to be here, but if we're emphasizing better efficiencies, better uses of space, multipurpose uses of space, maybe there's a place on here to show that so that we're not just saying, oh, there's no maker space, because people go, oh, no, no one can make anything there, right? Like, whereas we have, we'll have multi-use spaces where that could potentially happen.
Well, I think that's the challenge. We won't have very many, most, but we'll have the community room space and that kitchen space.
But we haven't decided yet. I mean, I think there's, there's opportunities. I mean, look, like a, an existing building, if you renovate it, I mean, look at this space, for example. You're always going to have this column, the column's not going to go anywhere. It's going to cost you way too much money to get rid of this column, so you, you have to work around the, the constraints of the space, and with new construction, you don't have that. You can, you can optimize spaces.
Oh, wait, I just have to say something about the space. So there used to be a wall here, and it was so bad. And like, we went through a lot to get rid of the wall.
Right, but, but the column is.
Yeah, and let the column, I could careless have a column, because now it's in the space, right? So it just isn't so much better.
So for example, we live to building options summary, right? For example, community room, event space, kitchen. Existing is 180, Renault A is 180. It jumps up to 250 in B, right? And so this is, this is actually a pretty big size jump if you compare it then to C, but our, our concept, right, is that we are asked is that this community room event space would have the asterisk attached to it, that we'd be looking for an architectural firm that could help us figure out a way to double this event space with a kitchen, because you don't need the kitchen every single day, but like.
Actually, they do. And you, you could have a spy.
But like, well, we, we need to figure some of those things out, right? But if you're, so for example, San Marino's Chinese Pilfer Club has a, a space, and they have a demo kitchen where they do classes to, and they also have, they, in that same space, they have this large studio, they have a wall of mirrors that they use for exercises, but they have a curtain that goes over us, so when the curtain goes over it, they do presentations, they do movie shows. When the curtain goes up, they, they dance and exercise in there. When the curtain goes back and they don't want to do movie shows, they pull up the screen, they pull out the death test demo kitchen and it, it's a communal space. So I, I think what I'm asking is if we can denote in some of these, in B, where some of these new spaces, if we ask for it from the architectural firm, as like this is something that is a big increase in size, and it should be large and flexible enough that it can house these other needs, that would be, I think that would help us sell the.
Can I, can I just articulate what my, my vision for this is? And I think this gets lost in the B-plus, C-minus. What I would like to see is new construction with 10 to 20% more square footage that is utilized. Small amounts would need to be dedicated. The stacks are for the most part going to be a dedicated part of the library, although potentially an after-hours event could take place that takes place in the stacks because it's a, 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 a book reading or what have you.
Lobbying.
Yeah. But that's what I would like to see is new construction with 10 to 20% more square footage that brings into account that this is a unified shared space and that each, as we've been talking about, each of these units within it could have multiple purposes depending on who's accessing it at that time. And that's what I'd like to see the city improve going through a design, and then we can look at whether we can, and I'm already talking with people about trying to find significant amounts of public funding, so, and, and then we can also look at, because we're looking at a three-year event horizon, hopefully there'll be a, a better financial climate at, at the county state and federal libraries and senior centers and community centers so that we can get grants. But we need to be able to put something forward that has the functional ability to be made with say, $20 million from a bond measure, that goes, an infrastructure bond measure. And we look to private funding and public funding. So that, that's what I'd like to see.
What do others think about this idea of 10 to 20% added square footage or not needed? I mean, I get, I'm getting kind of, oh, it's plenty of square footage if we're flexible enough. And then this idea that, oh, we just need a little more square footage.
My, my suggestion would be for, for B and C. Why, why are we, why are we saying 320? I mean, it's, it's, you should, you should round it up first of all, and I would give a range. Why, how about 27 to 30? And, and, and same thing for the, for the, the, after C. You will range, and because we, there's no way we know that, down to the last, you know, square feet is.
Because they, they never really explained how they came up with this, this general set of the needs assessment. If you get into that very detailed, we'll get how much space.
It's too detailed. It's, it should be a range, you give it 10%, you know, plus or minus, 27 to 30, what was good about, 21 and a half.
28, 32, right?
Something like that, yeah. And then, and then we, 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 we don't lock ourselves into, into this.
It must be the same time.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Oh, you didn't give up 27, 320.
Yeah.
And, and, and maybe there are, we only get 27, but you know, maybe, maybe there's funding available is 32.
I, I agree. When we came up with the A, B and C, the idea was more along the lines of, we're sticking with the exact historic structure and remodeling that versus we're tearing it all down and doing a full overhaul, and B was the idea is that we're doing a partial key, partial remodel.
Yeah, they get lost from that.
Yeah, and I think it, it got into the weeds when they used the needs assessment to come up with these numbers, but, but I think we seem to agree that B would be benefited by having like a little bit of extra space to play with versus us, like already trying to figure out like how we're going to like, you know, fine dice these, these spaces.
So let me, so let me rephrase. What I'd like to see is maintain the community, renovate the community room, raise everything else, new, entire new construction that incorporates the community room into, with that range of 28 to 33,000.
27 to 30,000.
You're, you're going down, you're making it smaller than.
28 to 32.
I don't think we want to go smaller than we currently got.
Yes.
Because we're looking at a 50-year event horizon on the, the utility, so we have to look at what's our population going to be, and there's going to be increases.
I mean, I think your recommendation doesn't have to be complicated, you know, I mean, if it's, we like B, we want, we want the flexibility, we need the flexibility, and we like this range of square footage.
Yeah, one story.
Yeah.
Keep, keep the.
Yeah, and I liked, I liked, but like, I like. Yeah, and I like, I liked what like Alex and Andrew said, maybe we should just get away from such detailed descriptions of the program space. Because I think that puts that puts something in somebody's mind and just did it more opened. Yeah.
Agree, I I don't think we're at a point where we're saying, oh, sorry, we're not gonna have a dance and fitness studio.
Yeah.
It's way too.
Yeah, but and the problem, I think, with with just the charts like this is people will look and say like, am I gaining is for my use and my gaining? And they're gonna be like winners and losers, and especially since. Couple of the themes that have come out in all of this is shared spaces and flexible spaces, and so I would, if you can. Show both that if you need to do this at all, which I agree you may not, but if you have to show the. The dedicated space and then show what it would be when you have flex, because if if anybody's using this room and I'm using my function and I. Now I've got way more, and I think we really, this this is kind of misses the big picture, the narrative of this, and so I hope whoever is giving the presentation. Really focuses on that, because if we get right into uh charts, I think.
Why I prefaced it as. A a recon, uh new construction with a a somewhat modest increase in square footage. I wanna lose all these categories, because I think that gets in, like you've been saying, gets into the weeds, clouds someone's vision and goes, well. Uh we we really need all the stuff that's in C and we can't get it, so let's do nothing, as opposed to, no, we're talking about new construction. With shared uh economies of scale, so that we utilize that, so that even if we only increase, even if. To Tony's point, even if we don't increase it at all, we've effectively, well, as per their matrix. Or metric, excuse me, we gained twenty percent automatically just by integrating and making it a shared space, so. I think that that's, I I'd like to kind of lose all the rest of this.
Yeah, and I think just, I I mean, if you think about the way this is broken down, it's giving you an opportunity. Like, if we didn't have any breakdown, we wouldn't know what we were talking about.
Yes.
We're talking about twenty, like, what are you talking about? For the for the conversation here, that some concept of library versus what is shared, so I mean, that was, that's.
Because we have this conversation.
Had to give them to council. We had this conversation like six months ago when we didn't have these numbers, and that's the problem that we had, right, we were hand waving. But I think these numbers help us, but yes, what we put forward to council is. The structural idea that we want to keep the store portions, but have new construction. The goals are to optimize efficiency and to maximize and to maximize shared spaces so that we can meet. These community needs that have have been registered, and then we have a rough idea of these communities have roughly. Like this need for seats or people or spaces, um but we recognize that would be many of those. Uh functionalities could could overlap within the same space, and that's what our goal is looking for from an architectural group.
Yeah, yes, yeah. And I think we also wanna emphasize. Um you know, but the new construction, we gain a lot of uh, you know. Well, I don't know if you're there yet, but you know, sustainability, you know, is this, is this gonna be building that uh uh, you know, as. Efficiencies, energy, uh or or any kind of sustainability features that that I think the city really, really desires, and we wanna, we wanna highlight this. If they're renovation, you you're gonna get very difficult.
Yeah.
And you really lose a a lot of flexibility, and we don't know what the needs are gonna be ten years from now, we don't know what the technology is gonna be like, we can't plan for that. And so by just doing a reno of this, you really, you've locked yourself in in terms of flexibility.
Yeah, so we push the modernization.
Right, like, for example, we have different Wi-Fi space, we have the senior center, we have three different Wi-Fi spaces. That don't even sync up, so seniors who really are Wi-Fi challenged, sometimes are like, oh, and I finally connected it, but now I've walked over here and it doesn't work anymore. And we can't, we'll have to get that changed, so anyway, yeah, that would be a thing that would be new and better and improved.
And 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 a new new construction, you would, you really future prove.
Okay, but we're really getting it fixed, but but you know, it it could be anything better, isn't it?
But it it needs to be, it needs to be designed, and I'm sure the design team will 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 really um. You know, emphasize this, we we need to, we need to have spaces that can be modified in the future for if if things change.
Yeah.
Just because we believe today, this is, this is our needs, doesn't mean in in ten or twenty years or thirty years, we still have the same. I mean, that's why, you know, these these spaces get get changed, walls get taken out. We wanna be able to have these options and we wanna have a design in a way, this is all bearing walls, it it is really hard to 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 move anything, but. If you design it right, you can, you can have flexibility in spaces, you can take down walls. Uh and and really uh adjust the building for future needs, and but it needs to be modernized in twenty years.
But I think, I'm sorry. Go ahead, that's okay, I just. I kind of saying what Tom's saying, but I won't even go a step before, because we're presenting this to the council, and I I know a lot of people watch the council meetings, they attend the meeting. So I wanna, I wonder if there's also a step before that needs to be like, what are these pain points, and that's what we're talking about. And I think that really has to be emphasized about like, why are we even doing this, but people are gonna be like. Wait, I I heard there's bonds that have to go for the streets, and you know, financially speaking, that's, you know, like, I think we have to really kind of. Show the community, like, this is the moment, and this is the time, and this is why, and I don't, maybe you don't go as granular as the Wi-Fi issue. But something that really, because right here, here's the deficiencies, key observations, but it needs to be like, if we don't do this now, this is what's gonna cost us. You know, I don't know, I think that needs to just be in there a little bit more.
No, I I totally agree, I think like, understanding how there's no natural light in a library, when you see any contemporary library, there's lots of natural light, there's open seating areas, there's. Wi-Fi capabilities, internet capabilities that we don't have, that you don't have now, and I and I think that helps make the case. Why the council should even consider it, because the city manager can step in and go, we have no money, zero at all, so let's not do anything, right?
So this is kind of jumping ahead, but. Here's how I'm tentatively envisioning that presentation to council, which is that staff would do the first piece, which is. What is the origin of this project? What are the deficient, you know, why are we even doing it?
Yeah.
Which is something we demonstrated through not only this round of needs assessment, but through the library strategic plan and studies that you guys did in twenty thirteen, fourteen. So we have tons of documentation about what are the reasons that we're pursuing with this at the time. And that I think the staff would kind of talk about that, the staff would talk about the committee, what the committee has done, what their contributions have been. Um and kind of what are the high-level goals that this body had when this, when they were created, which is to complete this piece of this project. And then that kind of leads into group four, talking about the specifics of, you know, the engagement that they did. Their technical um assessment and findings of the tree and the grade and, you know, the code and the parking and whatever else is in that grouping. Um and then that comes then into your recommendation.
Okay.
Um and I think that Todd is is thinking about having. I I don't know how he would choose, but having someone or someone, multiple people potentially from the committee actually talking about. Your recommendation versus staff giving our foundation, you know, so we would have slides prepared and it would be in the staff report, but the, when it comes to actually. Speaking about it to council.
And I think we would want you, this body to nominate one of your, you know.
Yeah.
I don't think, you know, Todd or me or Kathy should say, well, you know, I like Bianca best. I think I think you guys, if you guys can choose a spokesperson, that'd be really helpful.
I think you too.
Maybe, yeah, sure, yeah, the I think the number is up to you.
Could I just make a motion, sorry, can I make a motion, and then obviously you can tailor the language, but. It'd be a motion to recommend to council that as the city moves forward in procuring a design firm, the council's request of the design firm. That they include the renovation of the nineteen thirties historic building and build twenty-eight. Thousand to thirty-three thousand new square feet of integrated library, community center and senior center spaces. While also taking into consideration the community needs outreach conducted in twenty twenty-five.
Sounds lovely.
Great.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
No, I will watch this. And I think that we have enough information uh about what you're thinking is to. You know, kind of explicate that in the written piece that, you know, in the staff report. Um and I think that we can also share that via email.
Can we vote on that?
Yeah.
If I can offer a friendly amendment, even though I'm executive, I think you should add that we will maintain the historic Wharton big tree.
Okay. And I think Victoria said twenty-eight thousand when I.
She said twenty-eight to thirty-two.
How we wanna go.
We like twenty-eight to thirty-two.
Okay. Thirty-two or thirty-three? We need.
Thirty-two.
So we have uh a motion and a second and a friendly amendment, we need to.
I I mean, I think you can hold that into the just the historic.
Yeah.
She said, I think this, I think that based on community input. If we don't specifically sit, because if we say new construction, and we say only we're gonna maintain that, people are gonna get in their heads that that means the trees up.
No, I I know, but you you could say something more general about the park, because there's a lot of other.
There's so many other.
Just the more, yeah, other nice things about the park.
And we never got group four's final report back on the morgue, like, exactly how old is it, and how long is it, like, you know. Sorry, but that's one of those weird things that I keep online, being like, what are we gonna do?
Wait, we need to vote on this.
Yes, we do, and I can tell you what. It is, I think we can say, it's safe to say that it couldn't live another fifty years.
Everybody can all die.
I mean, right, like, there's some that are two hundred and fifty years old.
And Victoria, just as the maker of the motion, do you accept the friendly amendment?
I do.
Is adding some.
So amended to reword it to say, historic nineteen thirties building, maintain the character of the park space. And build, and then it continues for the new square footage.
But but there was, there was a lot more, we, I remember one slide where there were like the the priorities in the last presentation, there was.
Yeah.
This body, this body had a bunch of priorities that were really important to us. And 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 that, that needs to be in the presentation somewhere.
Yeah.
I I mean, maybe this, it it doesn't need to be all wrapped up in this one one statement, but it's. The we we had some findings that were really close to our heart, that that needs to be maintained.
And they'll link be there, I I actually, just so you all know, um we asked Rich and Julia to help us get those slides. Kind of massaged and finalized, so. Yeah, so we will definitely have that. Again, you guys really set those goals at the beginning, um and we can. Uh my vision is that we list those out pretty explicitly, so those would definitely be.
But maybe this is a dumb question, but just from my clarification, maybe I missed it, but this body is still gonna be involved all the way through to them.
That I do not know, I think that it was not, it was not clear.
Are we, she done and we're just, you got.
I mean, we could add ourselves into that motion that we would like. Right?
Yeah.
I was calculating my sentence was done, like, I will definitely be able to edit it in the senior center.
But wait a minute, I I mean, it was, it was kind of. Told to me as like this is a multi-year.
Yeah.
Oh, wow, so we we actually.
That the consistency of the committee should continue.
I think.
Can I make a of just a couple procedural? First, it would be super helpful to, you you can continue to discuss the motion, but I think eventually be good if you voted on it, you can make multiple motions, so. So this is, that's kind of the meat of the motion, right? Um if there is a motion to ask council, so uh my understanding is that, you know, ad hocks have to be temporary by nature, so. It it really, if it be, if it sort of then becomes a standing committee, then then there's like different rules, so I think um. So I think if you want to, so the idea was that it would dissolve after there was a recommendation on on. But made from this body on sort of what the design might look like, uh you could certainly make.
Being there yet.
Uh what what I mean, like, like after the the MB, I think it.
After this, after this.
That that, I think that was the the initial, however, you can make another motion, and we can include in there a recommendation to city council to reform. An ad hoc, you know, to to review the, you know, the second piece of it, right, um.
I mean, it definitely, the the, when we, when the body was established, it was a phase one site plan, phase one, so. And like Nick said, just procedurally, you have to have an ad hoc, meaning that it goes on and on, and have to have a very specific defined purpose, and I think we've. You fulfilled that purpose, but yeah, if you wanna tell council, hey, we all wanna still be involved in this. When we're ready to go into phase two, I think that that.
You should vote on that.
Can I make, well, I was just gonna say, can I make a motion?
Can we vote?
Well, let us recall Victoria's motion.
Yeah, let's.
Get a finish.
Call uh on Victoria's wording and the the motion that she made, so um I will go through the recall, Mayor Janet Braun.
Yes.
Uh Christine Bay.
Yes.
Let's see, Alda Field.
Yes.
Alexandria Levin.
Yes.
Um Ashar.
Yes.
Rich Albom.
Yes.
Bianca Richards.
Yes.
Victoria Rocha.
Yes.
Dean Sirwan.
Yes.
And Julia Wang.
Yes.
And the motion carries.
We did have a dinner.
I'd like to make a motion that we present to council that if council does decide, decide to go forward to a design phase. That there be a s- a new ad hoc committee formed. That is composed of anyone from this ad hoc committee that would like to serve on the new committee. Plus such other members as necessary to fill out the number, so that there will be continuity and consistency in the process of this project.
Second.
Second. Is that?
Sure, yeah.
Something like that is okay.
Very valid, yeah.
Does that make sense?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
I would just add, as a person who. Would help put this. I mean, it makes sense for a lot of reasons, but actually, we had like sixty-eight or seventy applicants, Kathy, you were there too. We had a lot of applications for this, and it took a lot of time to go through those and to kind of, you know, talk to people and. So it makes a lot of sense, because I don't think we wanna go through that again, I think it's important to have community, and I really.
And we would have to go through this whole education process as a back again.
I just, I think it just makes that kind of stand, I think we were pretty careful about trying to get different. Parts of populations and different backgrounds as part of this committee. So I I think it it will be important to have if we can actually figure out what on this.
So was it very, very clearly defined when this, when this. This committee is uh completed their assignment, or was it, was it more vaguely defined? Was it, was it really just, right, because it seems we never, at the beginning, when we first started meeting, we didn't even know what this first phase is. We defined it ourselves, and we kind of cut it off, in my opinion, too early, I mean, they they could have, if there would have been more money. We we would have done a lot more feasibility, a lot more design work, like, you know, a schematic package. That's what I envisioned at the beginning, but then I realized, oh, we only got very limited funds, and then then we kind of. Reduced our our scope of this first phase, so I, to me, it's like, I don't think we ever define where we're, when we're done.
I mean, we could go back to the the, there are two staff reports to council, there was a first one. Where we went to California, we think you should, we're recommending that you create this ad hoc committee, and here's what that. How it might be constituted, and they then created um. She's got her mind on it. I I mean, I think that, I think that the way that it's worded is that this is a multi-phase, multi-year project, and that this site plan project. Is a phase, a first phase, and that that's like, that's the role of this body. I I think that I like the way the dean worded it, that basically, when the time comes, that there's. Phase two, the same people have the opportunity to be participating for all the reasons Janet just said. But I don't think um. You you know, I I think that we have to, you're going with your recommendation, the site plan is finished, we're finished with the consultant. That's kind of the the end, and we would recommend with the council dissolve this body. For this particular purpose that you were, you know, you were asked to to do, and then again. The recommendation that you guys make to council can be that, hey, we wanna keep being involved in this. When you're ready to create a committee again to do X, Y, Z. I mean, I think there's gonna be kind of a period between the next year until we get to. A ballot measure, if we get to a ballot measure, where there's not a lot to be done, right? We're all gonna be sort of in this waiting mode a little bit, I think.
Yeah, I think, Nick, you, I don't know if you know where we are on this, but um. You know that the streets are really our first priority, um and I think Todd and you were, have, we have a consultant. Um hired to do some outreach, to try to figure out the appetite of the community as to sort of how much. And what would they vote for, like, would you vote for sixty million in streets, twenty million in library, eighty million in streets?
Can I point out that um I would again ask that you not use the word library?
I'm sorry, yes, but sorry, sorry, community center, but.
Because it's going to be. Because it's going to be.
Understood.
Limited.
So I understand that, so I think what we're trying, because it comes down to money, right? I mean, really, I think everybody knows that this community center needs to be revealed, but it's just really about the money.
Yeah, I think so, the plan, the plan was basically to have this, you know, committee come up with the recommendations, was a great recommendation today. That we can bring forward to council on November fifth. Um, and then, and then assuming, and then assuming that there's sort of a, a next steps, like council wants to keep going in the exploratory, exploring this. Then, um, we would come back, and I think Todd had committed to, you know, um, running some of the questions by, uh, you know, some members of this group. So that you can get some feedback before we go out to the community, so we're sort of waiting on the, on that, um, opinion gathering until after the November fifth. And make sure, A, council wants to continue, right, um, and then, B, getting some feedback. Um, from the members of this group, and then we'll go out and get a little bit better, you know, get a better idea from the community, so. Um, so that's kind of the steps that we're waiting for, which is why we're trying to get on the November fifth, so that we can start going on the next phase.
And, and you and Todd mentioned that at the last meeting, and I appreciate, I just want to kind of. Tie that back together with, with Leslie's comment, that there's a lot of people that don't, you know, may not understand the need for it, and to me. One of the goals, as was stated in, I think, in the first meeting, was to not have this be like the other reports, and so it's sitting on a shelf. Four, you, four or five years from now, so to that end, to me, there's an initial binary, before we get to any of this other stuff. About getting momentum, both, you know, from the council and from the community, and so I do think in the presentation, it's really important to. To kind of think that way and make the case, because people don't, you don't see the bad infrastructure when you come here. If you don't go to the other libraries, like we did when we went on the site visits, you don't realize, you know, kind of how deficient this is, this, you may think this is the way libraries are. If you don't go to other ones, and you know, there were some, also some data that the consultants did, group four, showing the per square feet. A lot of that is really persuasive, and to me, that, at this point, feels the most important, because if we don't get that. And they go do the survey, and people say, no, I just care about the, you know, smoothing out the streets, which is really, I feel every day, and they don't understand this. Then no, nothing goes forward, we could have a great site plan, and so I just.
I think that's a great point, because I think this all started because, you're right, people think, oh, the library is great, well. Okay, the HVAC is a mess, the roof is a mess, that, you know, that we just put a new flooring and make a senior center, that there's not nearly the electrical capability.
Or, and it's dark and gloomy.
And it's dark and gloomy, and it's, you know, there's, and, and I think Tom points out, like, we, we're limited based on this sort of the way this is built. We don't, we, we're not, it's fifty years old, we're not meeting, not, we're not meeting what is needed today, we're making do, that's fine. But I, I think you're right, a, a really strong case has to be made.
Yeah, and even.
It is, it is. I'll, I'll agree and disagree with your point, to a lot of people, this is what a library is. When I was ten, and going to the library every day to do my homework, that's what the library looked like, I'm sixty years old. A ten-year-old now goes in there and it's a dark gloomy place, and it's not inspiring. So it's not inspiring to the community.
This is kind of, uh, I think the stuff that has to be pulled out a little bit more, even, my husband made a good point, what about the people who aren't even necessarily library users? How do you get them to care about this? How does it impact kids of the future, or children, or adults, or whatever? So I think some of that, is there data that shows that if we fall behind, do kids start to fall behind? Like, I just wondering if there's data that shows that, how can you get other people involved who maybe don't have kids, or who haven't been to the library in twenty years? Um, so I'm wondering about that, and then the senior.
Seniors that don't have an active dynamic space to build.
Yes, so to that point, I think when we met about this the very first time, like, to go back to Tom's point, like, when, you know, we were setting our goals, right? We talked back then about this idea, like, what is the burning platform, right? You have to establish why this has to be taken care of, and that's why we talked about this as a library campus, because there's the effects on the children of the library. The effects on the seniors who don't have access to food, to communication, to, you know, weather, you know, all of those things, and then to the community, so we have to. Present, and group four had a few good pages on how we compare to the existing community and how far we're falling behind. I think one of the other things that people would need to see is, in addition to just the potential losses. We actually need to see concretely what the cost would be, right? Because when you mentioned the HVAC, you can't just keep on like ignoring, right? So every, every time, so even if we decide not to go through with this, the library is still going to, and this, the library, the senior center. Will still continue to have more and more need, right? Everybody who has like an old house can attest to this, right? You get to the point where you're just throwing money at it, and none of that money is actually rebuilding or remodeling or.
You're keeping it together.
Moving over the, right, you're just holding it together.
This is a cooling center, in case of emergencies.
Yeah.
That was, uh, that's what I was gonna say, there's two other things that we haven't even, maybe, that maybe are due for a little bit more highlighting. One, the fact that it is, like you said, an emergency center, so we all went through the wildfires, and what happens if that was right here in our community?
Yeah.
So a lot of people would have had to come here, right? Uh, yeah, so we need to highlight that, and the other one, I was just thinking of wildfires, and I just forgot.
Power outage, yeah.
Cooling, and, um, also the need, I remember Kathy talking about how now libraries are becoming the space where particularly like unhoused people, or. Different people are coming for services, the fact that that is really a growing need for a library that we don't really have, maybe the space or ability to do that. Those are two really topical things that people will say, oh, yeah, I get that right away, so I think that needs to maybe be in there somewhere.
And also capacity, the, um, because, the, the density that the state is now requiring this city to take on in terms of housing. I think it's also capacity, I mean, we're, you know, if this SB seventy-nine had just passed, could, you know, we could see twelve thousand more people here.
Again, why I think we need to increase.
Yeah, but we only have so much money, but I think it's a good point to our case, to say, if this housing. You know, population increase in South Pass and affecting the library usage, these are how many people live here now, this is how many people could live here in a few years.
Yeah, I mean, we can barely accommodate, yeah, the number of people we have.
I think for the council to understand that, which they know, but to make it clear.
It's gonna be more, it's, I think it's gonna be more, yeah.
Yeah, we're not, I mean, to be honest, this, I see, yes, it's the, in the room, this present is, is for the council, but it's really. It's just, it's just as much for others, and, you know, these, the private donors in the, because they're in the community, we're here, we, this is, to me, this is. Part one of, of building a long-term case, and that's why I hope when we can talk, have it talk after, like, we get, you know, articles in the local. Papers, and there's other stuff that should happen right after the, the meeting, but it's, it's a great opportunity, and basically, what everybody's saying, they can, you can kind of boil it down to. Three or four main arguments, which is what, you know, what you want to do.
Mm-hmm. Will we vote on Dean's motion, and then pick speakers for the November fifth meeting?
I can tell Victoria what. I love, I love it.
Yeah.
No, we need it, like, what do we do now?
We have a motion and a second, so we'll take the roll call, Mayor Janet Braun.
Yes.
Kristen Duvey.
Yes.
Leslie Alde Field.
Yes.
Alexandria Levin, no, Tom Ashar.
Yes.
Rich Elbaum.
Yes.
Uh, Bianca Richards.
Yes.
Victoria Rocha.
Yeah.
Dean Surwin.
Yes.
And Julie Wang.
Yes.
The motion carries. I want to just, to Nick's point, if, um, if Todd and you are thinking that. You're gonna, you want to communicate with this body a little bit about the, about what the, the feasibility consultant in terms of the bond is doing. Do we want to keep this body?
But I think, I think the idea, because.
We just email people.
I think, I think would be to email, to email separately, and then just get, get everyone's feedback, because again, I, I think. Part of it is like, you know, if we're discussing the survey in public, you know, public venues, just.
It's okay, I just want to.
Purpose, yeah, so.
Procedurally to clarify that.
Yeah, so it would be the clearinghouse, we'd want everyone's feedback, and then obviously, then staff would have to be responsible for collating that, getting it together, yeah.
Is that going to be part of the presentation?
Mm-hmm.
That's, that's.
Yes, yeah.
It's sort of like, what, the information that you guys were sharing on the fifth should be taken into consideration. In terms of what questions are being asked, so that the public has that in their mind, when they're starting to answer about whether. They're supportive on, and what would they, you know, so, yeah. And I appreciate the city postponing to, you know, they're specifically postponing that outreach, so that they can get, we can do that on the bill. I have a, a clarification, um, so, um, when group fo- four presented the presentation. I think we all felt it was a little too long, and it needed to tighten up, so are they doing that? I, are they're doing that with, with staff and with Julia and Rich are gonna help us.
Yeah.
Um, yeah, so Todd specifically said no more than fifteen pages, and I think that, um. We've seen the draft of this new version, and I have a lot of, uh, changes that I would like to see made to it. And, and also just in terms of, for example, they have information in there, like, listing the committee, I'm, I'm pulling that out into the staff piece, and, and. We'll talk about the committee there, and then they'll just be focused on the work that they did and this information, and, and again. I think we got a really clear idea last time of what are these sections that we need to cover, goals, you know. Anyway, I think we have a pretty good handle on it, and I think with Julia and Rich taking a look at it, we're, will be.
Because all the data is still there for them to look at.
Yeah, we just talked to.
Doesn't have to be in the actual presentation.
Right, and, and again, I think the, we're all going to think up to a higher level, yes, we all saw ten slides about peer comparisons. But we don't necessarily need ten slides on peer compar, you know, we need one slide that says, we're not up to snuff compared to our neighbors.
Yeah.
And here's why, you know what I mean, so I, I'm not worried about the, the slides, um, I think we got everything we need from the body last time. And thankfully, these guys agreed to help us out a little bit.
Thank you, thank you for doing that, that's great.
Yeah. So, Victoria, so the next question was, um, and this actually, if we're done with item four, we'll, we'll move on. I think we've taken all the motions, so, um, item five is sort of this topic, it is, um. I have an update from staff about how we're envisioning presenting this to council, and so that flows right into the idea that. We want a couple of people from the committee to actually be thinking about your recommendation, answering the questions that, that the council may have.
Well, I just wonder if maybe Rich and Julia are interested in doing that, if they're helping craft the presentation and understand, they understand well the priorities of this group. I don't know, I trust them.
I'm happy to do it, I can, my own feeling, I think Dean has more, more history.
I know he does, but I think he'd be good, Rich. Dean will be there.
There, there'll also be an opportunity for public comment, so you can make your own, you can make individual public comments as well, you know.
I mean, Alexandra, if you want to make that motion, you can make that, as long as these guys would, are, are, would be willing to do that, November fifth, it's.
Yeah, available. Okay, I'd like to move that, um, Rich Elbaum and Julia Wang are, are representatives, um, to the city council.
We have a, a motion and a second, any discussion? Not, we will take the roll, so.
What, sorry, but I think we should make sure that in public, Victoria gets the credit for summarizing. You're the author of this.
You know, she wrote it up, she wrote it down on, on the agenda, and I'm thinking she's got to save that page. For the archives, it's the theme, you know, there'll be the.
Right, that, look and scratch.
I mean, I think in the presentation, we're gonna make an effort to kind of indicate all the different backgrounds that have come into this, because everyone brought. Really important pieces, you know, whether it's public works, or architecture, or engineering, or communications, or, you know.
Yeah, for us to attend the presentation would be great.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, for sure.
Yeah, we should get T-shirts or something.
Like a T-shirt or something.
Yeah, yeah.
I was on the committee. Yeah.
We'll call the roll on that, uh, Mayor Janet Braun.
Yes.
Kristen Duvey.
Yes.
Leslie Alde Field.
Yes.
Alexandria Levin.
Yes.
Tom Ashar.
Yes.
Rich Elbaum.
Yes.
Bianca Richards.
Yes.
Victoria Rocha.
Yes.
Dean Surwin.
Yeah.
And Julie Wang.
Yes.
And that motion carries. Thank you for volunteering to do that. All right, moving on, uh, we have, um, committee member communications, I know that Alexandria has the communications, please.
Okay, so, talk about the senior center, we have this great event coming up, let's see about mom and dad. So I don't know if any of you have aging siblings, parents, spouses, other loved ones. This is a great presentation, Tony, who's a member of this committee, will be one of our wonderful speakers, it's going to be right in the senior center there, there will be snacks. And other things, and it's just really great, I recommend you, let, we have a lot, all these different, um, organizations coming to speak, and. It's a really helpful evening, we have it at night, so that working people can come, and, um, please share it with people you know, or coworkers, or whatever, friends. And hope to see you there.
Thank you. Any other committee members have comments?
I would just want to share something on a personal note, is that okay?
Yes.
Okay, uh, because I would like to make of, of the group, so I just want to say that, um. My dad passed away in September, which is why I wasn't at the original meeting in October, but he was Nevada State Archivist for thirty years. And part of what I think has made me want to be a public servant, not just for pay, but also for fun after work. Is because of him, and especially being on this ad hoc committee has been really important, because, you know, he worked in the Nevada State Library Archives and Public Records Building. And he helped make that building open, um, he helped make that sure that, uh, as he put it, the rights of the Nevada, the rights of Nevadans are preserved here, he meant in those walls. And so getting to impact the community that I live in and that I love so dearly, because I moved here in two thousand, I'm to LA in two thousand and fifteen, and the first time I saw a South Pass, I said. This is like Mayberry, I want to move here once I get done with grad school, and luckily I was able to, and, um. Yeah, he influences so much like what I want to bring to this committee, and I so appreciate the passion of the people in the room. How important libraries and community spaces, even senior spaces are, especially as I just went through. Taking care of an aging father for the last ten years, it's fantastic, so, just, I know it's like a big personal share that contributes nothing to this group in any meaningful way, other than. It's in my heart so closely right now, as I leave next week to go to his funeral, and I just appreciate all the work that you guys do.
I think, I think it, it goes so perfectly, because it's community, senior.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Exactly why we're here.
Yeah, thank you. You know, and, and one other, if we're gonna be personal, I, I had lunch with my son the other day, he's in Silver Lake. He said, the last few days, he was just in different places, and four different people were saying, oh, yeah, I'm interviewing for a job in South Pass. Or I'm moving to South Pass, and it was, there are a lot of, and energy and people coming here, and it really behooves us to do what we can to make this. More functional for everybody, so.
What, and, did you guys see how beautiful across the street is looking? They had it all lit up.
Oh, are they doing something?
It makes those look really shabby. When I pulled up, I thought, oh my gosh, it's, it looks amazing.
Yeah, they did a great job.
Beautiful light.
Yeah.
I have the cat, what are they doing, something at the Cat?
I, my understanding is that, not tonight, that they're tentatively hoping or looking to get.
They have things to do.
Yeah, they're not ready to do.
They're not.
But they're doing something, there's, there are fingers crossed that they will be able to do their Halloween event, Dean.
Yeah.
I actually don't know about the Halloween event.
I know.
That's what I understood.
They, they have, they have a single gig booked for December fourth, they're unable to book anything without knowing that they can be there. So it's gonna be probably a three or four month ramp up before they're going full steam, because, you know, if you actually follow Syndicat. Uh, you can see that they've got bookings out until, like, you know, they've got stuff in October of next year already booked. Because bands book tours in advance, so being able to have that facility available and used would be very helpful.
Well, maybe Julia and Rich, we should take a picture.
Once we stop recording.
Take a picture. Shabby across the street looks, look what it could look.
Yes, you just need some lights, I had, uh, a meeting with the public, new public works director this week, and we kind of walked the site. And I specifically said, look how nice and bright it is over there now, and look how dark it is on our side, I said, oh, wait, well, yeah, let's look into lights, right? Like, I haven't been able to get lights before, but I think there is always momentum, um, and I think it does. Activating that space in that commercial way is changing our side too, and, um, we'll see.
It'll be, when somebody beautifies something, then the neighbors think, oh, yeah, I'm, I want to direct it.
Any other comments from committee members? Um, if not, we're onto staff communications. None?
Um, the wifi. Yeah. It's happening.
Trying to get it fixed.
It's happening.
Yeah, there's so many things, good if I let all, the library has had many, many improvements this year, you guys got your floor, we've got our security gates, we're getting, um, an emergency. Uh, some of our security stuff, security cameras and electronic key cards, so the city is investing in the facility and in staff well-being, and.
Right.
It's just a balance of, you know, we don't want to put in something that, then we do move forward with this, and we spent a lot of money on something that we can't transfer. We spent a lot of money on something that we can't transfer. Um, so Victoria said it so eloquently, but, uh, I just wanna thank everyone for participating and being part of this team. And for bringing so much of your kind of passion and your experience. It's been really great. Like Janet said, it was so interesting, uh, interviewing the people that wanted to participate. And it was not the usual suspects, you know, we see a lot of the same people participating on commissions and it was so interesting to. Have all of you guys come out and say, hey, yeah, we wanna do this. You know, I haven't done something for the city before, but this really speaks to me. So it's really a special group and, um, I think group and, you know, I know we haven't always maybe been as efficient as we would like or. Quite understood where we were going or what our objectives were, but, um, you guys have been great and I really appreciate you all and, and thank you.
Thank you.
So in that, with that, we will, um, adjourn the meeting, uh, at eight sixteen PM.
Wow.